All right, I'd like to call the order. This public hearing to discuss the revisions to the solar panel ordinance in Township. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Russell Farver, your solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll provide a brief overview of the ordinance being discussed this evening, which contains changes to the zoning ordinance at Windsor Township. We are considering this evening ordinance 126 of 2024. It provides changes to the zoning ordinance updating provisions pertaining to installation, operation, and use of solar energy systems in the township. The public hearing, which is being held this evening, is required under the provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. The purpose of the public hearing is to give members of the public an opportunity to air their views and state their positions and for members of the Board of Supervisors to gauge public opinion regarding the proposed amendment to Windsor zoning ordinance. This type of public hearing is a legislative hearing and not a quasi-judicial or administrative hearing. Accordingly, persons who wish to speak do not have to be placed under oath. Although we are having a stenographic record made of this hearing, there is no right to cross-examine witnesses or township officials. In accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, the proposed ordinance was sent to the Township of Windsor Planning Commission at least 30 days prior to this public hearing. Also, a copy of the proposed text of the zoning ordinance amendment was forwarded to the Berks County Planning Commission for its review on or about February 14th, 2024. I am submitting a true and correct copy of that letter, which has been previously marked as Exhibit 1, and would ask if it would be made part of the record. By letter dated March 13th, 2024, the Berks County Planning Commission provided the township with a response, and I am submitting a true and correct copy of that to be marked as Exhibit 2, to be made part of the record. This public hearing was advertised pursuant to public notice in the Reading Eagle on April 23rd, 2024, and April 29th, 2024. The Reading Eagle is a newspaper of general circulation within the township. I have proof of publication evidencing this action, which has been marked as Exhibit 3. I'm asking if that would be made part of the record as well. At this time, we will take comments from the public regarding the proposed ordinance. If you'd like to comment on a matter other than the proposed ordinance amendment, this is not the appropriate time. Rather, such comments should be reserved for the public comment period of the general business meeting of the Board of Supervisors, which will be immediately following this hearing. At this time, do any members of the public wish to comment on the proposed zoning ordinance? Come forward and just state your name and your address for the record. That doesn't work. It's just for show.
Maria Ballthizer, 176 Blile Road. So I guess the first question I would have is, are there any opportunities for changes at this point?
You can make comments and the board can consider those.
Okay. Then I'd like to do that. On page two, under Section 6, A1, I'm sorry, A B, it talks about the minimum. I didn't know whether there was, why there wasn't a maximum, you know, say 300 acres or whatever. I just thought maybe a maximum would be good to have. On page, can I just go on? Okay. On page three, which is under D, number, no, I'm sorry, it's E, page three, E, it talks about the maximum height of 20 feet. I didn't know if it was possible to maybe lower it to 14 feet and add a comment to say maybe exclude aerial electric lines or substation equipment. On page four, under letter N, that seems to be a statement that is under contention at this point, so I didn't know if we could just delete the word concentrated. On page five, letter P, where it talks about emergency response. I didn't know if we could add as far as providing training before, during, and after construction for all emergency services in the county. Page six, under letter U, where it talks about the height of the trees. I didn't know if we could add maybe a tree diameter, maybe two to two and a half inches Also, what I thought may be missing is during construction, maybe hours of operation. Liability insurance, I don't know if anything was addressed with that as far as having liability insurance while construction is going on. And I don't know about a traffic impact analysis with what's going to be happening, especially during construction for those whatever number of months to have a construction plan or a traffic plan to say where they can park or not park or things of that nature.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment?
Can I comment?
You reside with the township, correct?
No.
Unfortunately, no. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment?
Just had a question, comments. One is about Bruce Ballthizer, 176 Blile Road. One question is about testing the well water before, during, and after. And the second comment would be about the glare. Again, just reiterating about the section end of the glare. I know, again, that's a point of contention with current, about whether, I'd say take concentrated glare out of that and just make it glare in general and prohibit any glare on roadways or on adjacent properties, on residential properties. Those are my two options.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to comment this evening? With the record reflected, there is no response. Members of the board, if you have any comments or discussion?
Was Steve Hoffman supposed to be here tonight? Because the majority of my questions are for Steve.
No, he was not. He normally wouldn't come to Board of Supervisors meeting.
Well, this is a public hearing for...
Yeah, no, he would not usually, he wouldn't usually be here, so we haven't...
Okay, because the answers, the questions that I have are answers that only he can give. Okay. Maybe you could, maybe you could zoom in or... Because a lot of the, I have quite a few comments and questions about the revisions.
Do you have Steve?
No, I haven't.
See if I can pull it up. He might have answered. You have a Zoom right now?
I should, I should have pulled up.
Yeah, see if maybe, maybe he can pop onto the Zoom. If he's home, maybe he will.
Unless you can try and answer some of them.
I can try, but I'm not, I'm not Steve Hoffman.
Let me start and run these by you and see what you think. Okay, with the revisions that were proposed by the Planning Commission, I would like to know, I'm just going like with commercial solar right now. I would like to know which zones that something like this is even possible in a township. With the Section 6, Paragraph A, subsection 1, it's five feet offset or back set from the property lines of residential properties. Let's start with C1. C1 in the township is not a very big zoning district, and with these kind of setbacks, it's not really practical for something like that to happen, okay? C2 is also small, and with these kind of setbacks, it's also not possible. WAC, is it possible to put something like this in WAC with the current zoning?
No. I mean, your zoning officer might be the better one to answer this question.
Either one is fine, either one is fine.
No.
Okay, so WAC is out.
The way you wrote the WAC zone, because it's more so protected, you would...
Why, life, ag, and conservative.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. All right, AP.
AP? Are you asking based on the setback?
No, could there be a commercial solar farm in AP?
If you permitted it.
By conditional use?
Correct.
Okay, industrial?
Yes.
Okay, now, my question, which is something that Steve would probably have to answer. What are PennDOT's regulations about casting glare from a solar farm onto PennDOT roads?
I don't know. Yeah. I don't know that they have a specific regulation. They, I think they follow the same glare analysis that the whole, like a state would use, that they use in general for any project on any road.
But there could be, but you're not sure?
I'm not sure, I cannot answer that.
Well, see, that's, yeah, that's why I need questions for Steve. Because with these 500-foot setbacks, you're basically coming in, on a PennDOT road, does the 500 feet go from PennDOT's edge of right-of-way?
500 feet would be from the edge of the property. No matter what.
But they're right-of-way. The revisions say that you have to stay 100 feet away from the road. The setback is 100 feet. But does that, how does that affect PennDOT's right-of-way? Is it also 100 feet from the road? And that's why I'm asking, does PennDOT have any regulations as far as that?
I don't know if PennDOT has a specific regulation.
Okay, let's just say you have to stay 500 feet away from PennDOT roads. You have 78 to the north, you come out 500 feet. You have Old 22 to the south, you come out 500 feet. On the south side of Old 22, you have homes. So you're narrowing down a strip of land in the industrial area, and if there's a glare issue there, you can't cast glare on their roads, plus you can't cast the glare across the street to the people that live on the south side of Old 22. So that basically takes the industrial zone out of this, for the most part. Correct?
If that's what, if you were to go by that.
Well, it says about the revisions.
You had, yes, in that regulation, then you would not be able to build according, based on that ordinance.
Yeah, because that's what's in the revisions about casting glare onto residential properties, adjacent residential properties.
Correct.
So technically, we can't put it in the industrial.
Why can't, I don't understand that. How am I to understand what that means?
If, with the, in the revisions of the, that we were handed from the Planning Commission, it says that you're not allowed to cast glare on adjacent residential properties, and that's why they increased the setback, you know, for noise and that stuff, too. So technically, to put them in, the panels would have to face south. They would be facing towards the houses on the south side of Old 22. So there's really only one area in the industrial zone that you could put it, and that might be east of Monument Road, where there aren't so many houses. But there are also houses east of Monument Road along Old 22.
So if you put the panels in 500-foot setback from the homes, the homes are on the south side?
Is it 500 feet from the PennDOT's right-of-way or is it 100 feet?
Yeah, he's indisposed at the moment, but he should be able to hop on in five, 10 minutes. I sent him the, see the link from the township website.
Okay.
So you're suggesting there's going to be glare at 501 foot?
Well, it's just glare in general. We just spent three and a half hours the other night at the public hearing about glare. So let's address it now and get this right.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, glare could be in any zone area. It doesn't have to be industrial. I don't understand what the industrial part has to do with this.
Because the possibility exists of putting solar panels in the industrial zone, but if it's going to cast glare on the houses across the street on the south side of Old 22, I don't want, I don't want to waste people's time coming in and putting an application in for something that can't happen. It's a waste of their time and it's a waste of our time.
Well, the reality is that if you're going to have a solar project, there's going to be a glare issue. There's no way around that.
Okay, I'm glad you said that.
So where, I think what the Planning Commission is trying to do is create some parameters to protect, to protect the residents, and it is incumbent on an applicant to do their research before they file an application.
Yeah, but if it was spelled out in the ordinance, we wouldn't have useful applications for solar farms that can't happen, because all it does is waste our time.
I don't think, I don't think there's any way for you to regulate that, because we have no control over applicants who are going to just put in an application and hope to be able to push it through, even if it doesn't.
So we could go on through endless hearings over and argue about this rather than straighten it out in the first place? That's what you're saying?
What's there to straighten out from your perspective?
Well, okay, well, actually, what I'd like to see, just by the comments that were made by the Planning Commission, if you're going to have 500-foot setbacks on everything and that, then that's fine. You know, I would like to see an overlay of the township and what land is actually, that is something like this is even feasible on, because I have no idea in the township where these things could go. I would have a better idea if I had that information. And that's for our purpose. We don't have to share that with anybody. But that's for our purpose to make a decision on the provisions.
Well, once you create, once you create that, it's a public record, so it's available to anyone.
Well, it would save a lot of aggravation for a lot of people.
Is it almost stating that the 500-foot setback is too restrictive in the industrial zone?
I don't think that the setback is, the point, I think it's the glare that is going to be cast by the panels on state roads and across the street on the south, for the residents on the south side of Old 22.
Because now, we're adding glare stuff in here, but we also have glare in our ordinance as a public nuisance, so they can't do that in general. And the eight-foot tree should help, you know, make a buffer yard. For example, you're, we're looking at, if you're looking at a solar panel, and the main issue with glare is because they don't do height of trees and buffer yards and thickness of buffer yards and all that.
The buffer addressed.
Yeah, the buffer yard should really restrict the glare in general. You know what I mean? When they do the study, if they're planting full-size trees. But I see what you're saying, that the, almost the setback in the industrial doesn't give it, if they have to follow these standards and there have to be the 500 feet because of the glare, then you're not, you're not going to meet any, any property in the industrial district. And you can't restrict something to absolutely nothing in the township.
It's going to be a slip of land, because along with that, in the revisions, there is a 50-foot buffer between the panels and the trees. So now, now you're at 600 feet.
Because then you're looking at, you're looking at solar panels then going anywhere in the township if you make it too restrictive. Is that what you're, is that the concern?
Well, I'm just, my concern is, by the way it's set up now, does it take the industrial zone out of play?
And that's a good concern, because that's where they should, where you're hoping, you know, to locate them. So are you talking about impracticality?
Yeah, pretty much.
I mean, impracticality, isn't the industrial zone fairly built out at this point? That, I mean, where would they...
It's all farm fields. The industrial zone is from Valley Road to Sunday Road.
There are, there are some places that could house them.
Oh, yeah, there's plenty of field that you could put them in. So are we taking that out of play by the way it's, with that setback?
Look, I mean, are you saying like definitively that there's no...
There's no possible way that they could possibly put them in there with the setbacks the way they are? Because as soon as you, as soon as it comes to a public hearing of an applicant, we're going to have people coming in and complaining about, you know, concerns about glaring. It's going to start all over. I'm trying to avoid that.
I'm not sure you ever do, because, and just being realistic, is that you're always going to have someone who says, "I don't want to see this in my backyard."
I don't understand that.
There is always someone, you know, and someone, you know, who might have, who might have an objection, as valid as it may be. So I think that...
Isn't it more prudent to deal with it now than have to, like I say, go through the three and a half hour of public hearings? If it be spelled out?
Spell that, what are you, I'm still not clear on what you're trying to spell out.
Well, my first concern is, does this take the industrial zone out of play?
A lot of those, do a lot of those properties spread between the industrial and the agricultural zone? Because, or...
There's homes all along there, up until Sunday Road, basically.
I mean, if what you're looking for is an overlay of where this can be done, I mean, that's not something that's going to be provided tonight.
Oh, I know, I know it.
You'd have, you'd have to table this and direct.
Well, that might be my next step until we get this figured out, because I have other concerns.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't know if that's something you'd want Steve to do or you'd want Tom to do, but I mean, that's something that...
Whoever would be qualified. I'm sure there's software out there.
They're both qualified.
Yeah.
It's just a question of who you ask to do it. But that's, that's not some, I mean, that's, I don't even know that, even if Steve does pop onto the Zoom, I can't imagine that he's going to be able to answer that question offhand.
Oh, I didn't expect an answer tonight, but I mean, it's a current center of mine, and it would eliminate a lot of guesswork, as far as we're concerned, to make an educated decision on these revisions.
It's also a moving target, because as, you know, you can get that for tonight's purposes, but, you know, someone develops their property differently and it's going to change.
We do it as of tonight, but, you know, that's all you can do. I understand what you're saying.
Okay, what are you looking, what's your proposal here, man?
Well, I would like to see an overlay with all the setbacks and that stuff. I mean, another concern is, okay, we basically went through the zoning districts. What about farms, farmers that have sold off their development rights? Can they, did something go on their farms?
No.
Okay, then you take all those farms out of, on that overlay. What about ag security area?
Well, it's the same thing.
You can't do it in ag security? Take them out.
But that's the same land, because the, because to sell your development rights, you have to be in the ag security area.
Okay, well, and I don't know how many, how many acres are in the ag security. I would like to know that, and an overlay would show that.
That I can tell. That's a question.
Well, I mean, I know you can probably give me the acres, but it doesn't, without seeing it on a map, you're just giving me a number.
Pretty much all these.
It's AP, it's mostly AP.
Yeah, you're just giving me a number. So basically, AP is out as well, unless people didn't sell off their development rights.
Correct.
I'd like to know that.
The revision, the ordinance that's now in effect allows it in two zones, okay? And if the new thing that's being proposed would be enacted, it could still, an applicant could still go into ag land. There would be places in Windsor Township where that would be possible in some of the ag land. Well, if I'm an applicant and I go through the restriction, you know, if I look at this and if you can't have it in industrial, then you go to another township. You know, the way it's set up, I personally don't think it should be in ag land, period. And that's the way, you know, I vote, that's past tense. But anyway, the way it would be in Windsor Township, there would be a zoning area where it would be possible.
Well, that's why I'm bringing up the industrial zone, because I know how you feel about it being in the ag, you would prefer to be in the industrial.
Well, right, but if an applicant goes through, does his homework and whatever's done, then you have to go to another place. You know, you don't have to have them. I mean, there's, the whole Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has so much land, there, you could have this, you don't have to have them in Windsor. We have a place now that you could possibly have it.
So we're allowing a place, we're, this ordinance is allowing applicants to come in and there's a place to put it. They may not, with 500-foot setback, they may not cover fence row to fence row, but they have a spot.
They need to have...
And we're allowing a spot, and we're not obligated to give them, you know, two-thirds of the township, are we? I mean, what, how much do we...
So you have, under state law, there has to be a spot in the township where they could develop this use, which you have now, and you will have other places that in the town, you know, you have an application right now. Because if you, if you don't, if the zoning ordinance is so overly restrictive that you can't build it anywhere, then it's permissible everywhere, and that's not what you want.
No.
Secondly, to answer your question, as of the most recent resolution, which is August 9th of last year, you have 5,216.13 acres in the ag security area.
And to me, that is just a number. I'd like to know where they are.
I have a list of addresses for you.
I'd like to see that.
I mean, I, and I sort of say that tongue-in-cheat, but I mean, I can tell you, they are largely, you know, in Strauser Road, Sunday Road, Chappelle, Windsor Castle.
WAC is out anyways, so don't worry.
Zweisig, Merkel Lane, Heine Road, Monument Road, Kohler Hill, Wybe, Valley Road, Ballthizer Road, Klaus Road. So I mean, those are, those are the areas.
Well, like I said, I would like to see it on a map.
I can't do that for you this time.
I know, I know that, but I also have, what if, what if I'm a farmer and I have a 100-acre farm? And my house is my resident, and it's in the center of that 100 acres, right? So this 500-foot setback, if someone would want to put a solar farm next to my property, it would be 500 acres from the edge of my property line, not from the residence. 500 acres from the edge of the property, correct?
Feet, not acres.
Feet.
Feet.
It's just a number. It's just a number.
Well, acres and feet are a big difference.
100 acres, let's weigh 10 acres out, you know, whatever the footage is.
500 feet from the property line.
Okay, so it's going to be 500 feet from the property on quarter of the revisions. All right, let's say three years ago, I bought 50 acres adjacent to it. Now I have 150 acres, but the parcels are in different deeds. And according to your lot definition, each lot is a separate lot. So if somebody wants to build, say it's on, say this 50 acres is on the west side of my farm. Somebody wants to build a solar farm on the west side of that, what are the setbacks to that property? Because it's just a piece of land, it's not my residence, it's a lot. What are my setbacks to that, what are the required setbacks to that 50 acres?
Whatever we change it to in this ordinance.
Well, it doesn't, there's nothing in there in this revision about that.
It would be, it would be the principal standard setbacks for that district.
40 feet.
Yeah. Those panels will follow the principal standard setbacks. If it's a vacant piece of land.
You shouldn't.
If we're saying 500 feet from the residence...
From the residential property line, but that's, it's just a farmer's residence.
From the residential property line, if you have a vacant piece of land, it would follow principal standard setbacks.
So it would, that would be 40 feet.
If you have like a farmer's field on there.
Okay, shouldn't that say that in here?
Shouldn't it say that it applies?
Excuse me?
Shouldn't it say what?
What the actual setbacks are on that 50 acres.
Well, there's, there's standard setbacks. You don't have to repeat that. It's, because this is, remember, this is part of a... You don't have to repeat that, it's, cause this is, remember, this is part of a, you know, 300-page ordinance.
Yeah, in addition to the ordinance.
So we would just use the original zoning ordinance for the setbacks?
So it would be the 40 feet, okay? That was my question on that. All right, um... The, and another thing Steve would probably have to answer, uh, with this, does this other part of the ordinance, not the commercial part, what was the other part?
Community.
Solar?
The community.
No, there was no mention about community.
Talking about accessory?
Accessory, yes.
Well, community hasn't been approved by the legislature.
Okay.
So you're just talking about accessory, so it's a residential structures?
Okay, now, okay, uh, what was the purpose in the revisions of keeping the panels on the front side of the house, that it was allowed, they were allowed to be 18 inches above the roof?
Well, the 18 inches and the three feet are fire code. You're talking about how they're placed on the roof?
Yes, I, I'm assuming that's what that is, with that 18 inches.
That's, that's fire code, yeah, you have to be 18 inches down from the peak, three feet from the side.
Well, okay, but that's all, it only says on the front side of the house, the other sides could be six inches in the revisions.
It's, it's based on, if you're providing that, the front panels, or one side of those panels with that peak access, each side would have to be the 18 inches. And then you have the three feet, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know you're three feet in from the edges.
Yeah.
And you can't be any higher than the peak, I think it is. But the way I read it, it looked like it was, you could have them 18 inches high on the front roof, and the rest could be six inches on the, the other roofs.
I think you'd supersede them.
You can't supersede them.
Yeah, so, where was that thing? It's so cute, it's in the front yard, the same angle as the roof, and which is installed with a maximum distance of 18 inches from the, on the other sides of the roof, the highest point of the system, so now I see the highest points of the roof, which is attached. I mean, I would, I would use 2018 IRC on that for building code, and I'd say, the panels can go up to 18, like, just like that on the front, 18 inches.
Would they have to be 18 inches on the other roofs?
Yeah.
But doesn't it say in here that's...
Unless it's an accessory building, accessory building, there's no, there's no, if it's an unheated accessory, you don't have to, building code, this is only for residential structures or heated structures.
Yeah. And, um, so here's a question for you. I made the investment to put solar panels on my roof front and back, and it says in the, uh, revisions that they are not allowed to cast any glare on a neighbor's property. You don't know what glare you're gonna have until your solar panels are up. Let's say I put, spent a lot of money, put solar panels on my roof, my neighbor calls you up and say, "Hey, I see glare off his solar panel." What happens? Do I have to take them down?
I would, no, I, I actually have done, done with this a few times. You, we have to call, we, first of all, I would send them a violation, and notice a violation stating that they're causing glare, cause it's in our prohibited nuisances. And then, they would have to do actually a glare study, and actually put something on, I've seen them, they sprayed something on there before.
Who has to do the glare?
Their homeowner. Yeah, I've, I've been through that twice in, in North Carolina Township.
I mean, that's just a deterrent to put, to keep people from putting solar panels on a roof, in my opinion.
I haven't had too many...
Why would you spend all that money and take the chance and have to turn around and spend more money?
To do...
To do a glare study.
I mean, it's the same thing, I had a guy put a, a silver roof on, you know, I mean, up here in Alwin, which caused a lot of glare issues too. No matter what, he can't, you can't cause a glare issue, so...
It also creates an incentive for people to do their homework ahead of time, and...
But how do you know that? If, I can't turn my house, my roofs are what they are.
Right.
You put panels on, how are you gonna know that?
But we just heard three and a half hours of testimony on how you can predict. You know, you can...
I'll have questions on that when we talk to Mr. Cleveland on, at the next meeting.
Okay, well, my, my point, my point is, is that, if you're gonna, if, you can do a, you can do a glare study ahead of time to try to predict, so maybe we're creating an incentive for people to, to do that research and that work before they put the, the panels up. So that they know that before they install them, they're not going to be negatively impacting their neighbors.
But why shouldn't we look out for the people of the township and notify them of that ahead of time? Isn't that our job?
Isn't that what we're, isn't that what we're doing by creating an incentive?
But I'm, but I'm saying, if, if, if that's a, a potential issue, put that in the ordinance.
You wanna require, you wanna require a resident, a residential application that you do a glare study?
I would require them that, that we notify them that it's a, a potential issue.
Notify who?
Well, any applicant. Say if I come in and do a permit, so I want some, I want something on the application saying, "This is a possibility, and something you may have to do if things go south."
So, um, I, I'm hesitant to have you put what could be construed as legal or engineering advice on an application, because then when you're wrong, you're, you're, you have a potential for liability, what if things change? I think that the notice to them is that they should read this ordinance before they proceed, and understand what it says.
No, I don't agree with that, cause the local homeowner's not gonna do that, he's gonna, you know, he's gonna call a contractor to come in and do this stuff, you're gonna get the permits, I understand there's, uh, engineering that's gonna be involved in it anyway, because the structure of the roof has to be able to support the weight.
All my plans for, uh, solar are stamped.
Well, so if engineering's involved, then why don't we put this, make this part?
I mean, you could, you could require...
I could, I could...
You could require the zoning officer to give, to hand out a copy of the ordinance at, with the application, but...
And highlight it down?
Could I, could I, could... You don't want him highlighting things for people.
I can red pen things. Can I, um, can we require, can, I, I don't know, can we require the company to submit their glare statistics or something, a page or... It's not in the building code.
They would be more adept to understanding what could happen, rather than a homeowner.
But the homeowner has an obligation...
Well, I understand that, but I'm, I'm trying to avoid aggravation for people in the township.
And, but a lot of these solar companies, I'm also chasing half the time too, they're just going up and, people signing leases and they're throwing them up half the time. Half my stop work orders are chasing solar companies right now.
That's not gonna change.
For what reason? Are they, are they not getting the engineering study that they need, or...
They just throw them up, they try to do them without permits. Tell them that head call, and he's the, the, what you call it, number?
Yeah, as far as hooking into the system.
Yeah, yeah. I, I've only had two that caused the glare issue, but I, I understand, I understand your point, I get it, I just don't know what, I'm just, I, I don't know what we could do, cause there's nothing, I don't know.
Cause there's a lot of people that come to the meetings that don't even know what zoning district it is. You think they're gonna understand these ordinances?
That is everywhere.
I'm trying to simplify.
Yeah, I get it, and no one reads the zoning ordinance either.
That's just my point.
In any township.
Well, it's just my point, I'm trying to simplify it for the people that wanna do it. Is that something they can hash out at the, uh, planning commission?
I mean, you can vote to rem, to remand it back to the planning commission.
Well, that's kind of, and I have another concern here, because, and this is something Steve's gonna have to figure out.
He's not in the waiting room, is he?
No, but he's not, well, I'll, I'll run this by you again, my last thing. We talked about the glare on the public roadways and that stuff, and the 500-foot setback.
Could, could you, maybe Tom could help with that?
Yeah, he can.
Have the Pendott Broadway glare, do you know if there's any state requirement for that? For glare on the, for Pendott?
Oh, top of my head, I don't know, okay. Okay, so that's something I'm gonna have to look into.
We do have to look at it.
Okay. My last one is, uh, it was, uh, section six, paragraph, use subsection one, putting trees up before construction. How many people have ever built a house and done the landscaping first before they put a ground? Anybody? Anybody? I understand why they wanna do it, as far as, to keep, to help keep the noise down and that stuff. But you also have, in that section, I think it may have been the section before, you can use earthen berms as your sound barriers. How do you create an earthen berm if you don't have trees up? Cause you can't, you have to put trees up before construction, before any construction is done. That's the way it's worked. How do you do that? I've been in construction a long time, I can't figure it out.
I believe it says about the screening consisting of a variety of every tree, or an earthen.
But, but what I'm saying is, to create that earthen barrier, you have to do construction.
Okay.
That's my point.
Understood.
Do you, you guys have any other comments?
Yeah, this is the field, this table, right here, this table's the field, they're gonna put solar panels here with the setbacks, they're gonna scrape the topsoil off and ruin the farmland forever, which is the foundation of the ordinance, they'll pile the dirt up here, there's your earthen berm, then go out there and hammer those posts into the subsoil, with no topsoil. That's how you do that. Or, if they leave the topsoil there, they plant trees first, and then compound the posts, and then notch the panels up.
That's what the, that's what the revision says, they want the trees up first before you do any construction. How do you, how do you strip any topsoil up? They want the trees up before you do anything. How do you do that? And what if the trees...
Is it candle or? What is or, but...
What, what if the tree, yeah, you can use either or as your, as your barrier, but how do you do an earthen berm if you're not, can't do construction until you have trees up?
What do you define construction? Move soil or...
It says any construction. You, you take a shovel full of dirt, that's construction.
So, yeah, um, I guess the idea is, what you're saying is, you know, it would be edited to basically say, construction sands, the construction required to create the berms or the plant, or the planting of the trees themselves, like that's the exception.
And with the planting of the trees, uh, I'm assuming that would all be figured out in plan development and that stuff, but, uh, but then you get to the situation where you have, uh, stormwater issues, and that's, you have to comply with all your stormwater rights, you're gonna have trees on the road to that. To me, this is an incomplete revision to the ordinance, and since we're running late, if anybody has any other comments, I'd like to make a motion that we table this and send it back to the planning commission and address those points. Do I have a second? Here in a second, I would, I'd like to hear the comments.
The, from my point of view is, I think everyone knows how I felt about this from the head call. And you're, you're never gonna have any kind of ordinance or any regulation that's gonna cover every little aspect of the thing. We're now going through a process where we have this big proposal and whatever, and I think now, we're trying to address this, that we don't have to go through all the bells and whistles, hopefully again, that we're gonna address some of this stuff. So, you know, if we have to then go down the road again, we do that. But I, I, I think at, at least this is a step forward, and then we can hopefully address, if we have to address things in the future, then we do that.
Yeah, but you know what's, what's got, where it's gonna happen? It's gonna happen at a, at a public hearing, where people are gonna come in and complain about stuff, cause it's such a gray area. Why not figure that stuff out now? Why not do it right the first time?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think you're ever going to address every potential issue.
I understand that, but these are, these are my concerns, so let's address them.
That's up to the board.
So I'll again make the motion that we take this...
The, the, the motion needs to be made in the, in the, in the meeting, this is just the hearing. I know, I know the procedure is a little wonky, but any motion on, you know, what you're gonna act, the action you're gonna take, will occur during the general business meeting. So, you know, if there, I, I don't know if Mr. Davis has any, has any comments that he wants to make in the, in the public hearing, but you can really, if you're, if you're concluded, you can, you can make a motion to, to close the public hearing, and then it's on the agenda in the general business meeting for you to, for you to address any action.
The only, the only comment I have to make, if you want to put it on record, is, um, the planning commission did a lot of work to put this together, they sent it to Reading, who's in Reading, Russell?
The County Planning Commission.
So, the County Planning Commission...
The county commission looked at it...
And sent us, the, the planning commi, and I don't mean to interrupt you...
No, no, explain it, please.
But the, but the planning commission, this county planning commission has done a lot of, has been digging into this issue, and sent us a lot of materials. Mr. Shell and I did go, did go to a training on this, and is that September or October? October of last year, that the, that the county planning commission put on, um, to address a lot of these issues. Some of the problem is that the technology moves faster than the law, um, and the, and what, what we can do. But you were right, that the planning commission spent a lot of time, and there's a lot of consideration of materials that were developed by professionals who focus on this.
Right. And the county level reviewed it too, and made recommendations, and you addressed those recommendations in this document.
Correct, but they didn't, didn't address my concerns. See, as a planning commission, that, remember, they make the recommendations to us, and then we decide if those recommendations are correct.
You are correct. You're correct, Mr. Chairman.
We do not have to adopt it just because it came from the planning commission, if there's concerns, which I have, and I feel they're legitimate concerns, we send it back to the planning commission and have them figure that out.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. Do any members of the board have any further comments to place on the record?
No.
No.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing, do it in a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jim.
I have the transcription.